Full time throughout its many, many year operating history. So that's, I know, important to the community, but I just want to bring that up. And thirdly, it becomes an opportunity to attract one of only 32 things in the world, an NFL franchise. The Raiders are fully committed to this. We've spent a lot of money and a lot of time and a lot of effort on this already, and we're eagerly awaiting the day where we're located here full time. It won't, however, be the Raiders' home. It'll be where the team plays, but their home will be in this community. They'll buy houses here, several hundred employees will relocate here, others will be hired here locally. They'll buy homes, they'll attend the local churches and synagogues, their kids will go to school here, they will be part of the community. That will be the home. The stadium will be where it showcases its talent. It's a complicated move. It's, as I alluded to a moment ago, very expensive. It involves not just the building of a stadium, but it involves marketing facilities that will be built out here, already are in the process of being built, stadiums, stores, a team headquarters and practice facility. So it's a multifaceted activity, but obviously it rests upon the stadium, and the importance of this stadium can't be understated. In a moment, we're going to show you a video to give you a little bit of a feel for what this will look like and how it might operate and how it might be integrated into the local landscape and the community. And just a word about the video. My experience on artist renderings and animated videos and things like this over the years has been that the artists and the architects can take quite a bit of liberties and kind of smooth out the friction of reality. This video, however, is rather literal inasmuch as it's been created by our design architect using a program, a computer-aided design program called Revit. And in this program, they actually model the building and design the building down to the very small-scale unit applications. And so when a rendering is created out of this Revit model, it tends to be very literal. And that's not to suggest that there aren't changes possible in the design. The design isn't complete, it's still evolving. But when you see this, it's not just the fanciful imagination of an artist or a videographer, it's the literal interpretation of the design as it currently stands. So Mario, could you switch on the video? Do I do that here?
You should be able to.
The center button? But for the video, not the slideshow.
[laughing] Oops.
Yeah, I want to play the video.
Oops.
The very foundation upon which the National Football League is built is the home where each team plays.
The next phase of the new era.
The place for history and generation.
Will create jobs.
Benefit our communities.
Our city's next iconic landmark.
Entertainment district.
Best football and event stadium in the country.
These stadiums are where stories come to life. It's where legends are born. And legacies are made.
Tennessee has pulled a miracle.
And it's here where the next chapter of the NFL begins. Welcome to Southern Nevada, home of dazzling Las Vegas. A booming market with extraordinary business opportunity. This thriving city is a top destination for American and international tourists, attracting more than 42 million travelers annually. Known for exceptional shopping and dining, the only thing that's been missing from the entertainment capital of the world is a home team. Declared the brightest spot on Earth by NASA, this electric city will light up even more when the Raiders come out to play.
Whoa!
At Las Vegas Stadium.
Hey, note that glare, folks, that's what the Airline Pilots Association is complaining about with respect to the stadium, just saying, okay?
Of greatness.
Guaranteed to deliver an unprecedented entertainment experience, Las Vegas Stadium boasts a location ready to host the NFL's biggest events: the Pro Bowl, the draft, and the largest stage
Right there.
The Super Bowl.
Right there.
The buildup is over, and away we go.
With over 150,000 rooms to accommodate fans from around the world and provide an unrivaled Super Bowl week experience, this vibrant city is practically designed for the biggest event in sports. The future is bright for the Raiders and NFL fans around the globe as the next generation of the world's greatest game begins in Las Vegas.
An effort like this involves, will involve, hundreds of contractors and many, many designers and, as I've indicated before, a labor force in the thousands. For the purpose of today, though, I brought a half a dozen of our key team members with me. First of all, you know Jay Brown and Lucy Stewart have been shepherding our entitlement process and planning process from the very beginning. Also, I have with me John Wood with Mortenson Construction, who is leading the construction and contractor team, including McCarthy and W.A. Richardson Builders. We have Kim Lee Horn, civil engineers, with us today. Rios Clemente, our landscape architects and designers. HNTB architects, who are really the grandfather of sports architecture, which is something done for probably 40 years and was started by HNTB and is their specialty. And finally, David Manica, who is our design architect, and you've already now seen some of his work this morning, and I will turn it over to David to explain his vision and inspiration for that vision. David?
Thank you, Don, and I just want to say thank you for this opportunity to speak to you about this incredible project. I am both humbled and privileged to have a chance to talk to you about what I think will be one of the greatest stadiums in the country, if not the world. And I'm speaking on behalf of an army of very talented architects, engineers, and designers that have sacrificed and really committed themselves to making this project exceptional. I want to take a moment just to get you oriented here. I'm not going to spend too much time on the site because some of my colleagues will speak to that in a moment. Due to a last-minute rotation of the drawing, the north arrow on your screen right now is pointing in the wrong direction. So to get you oriented, the north is to the right. You can obviously see the freeway on the bottom of the screen. That puts the strip just out of screen on the bottom there. So the stadium is oriented with views towards the strip. And in this particular drawing now, north is to the right. I'm going to take just a moment to explain the stadium, really. It's 65,000 seats, it's multipurpose. It is designed for football, but also many other kinds of events: concerts, family shows, dirt shows. It'll bring a whole new kind of event calendar to the city, and the building's been designed with that in mind. It has what isn't a covered, fixed-covered roof. It's ETFE. That's the material that's used on a lot of new stadiums around the world. It allows for transmission but controlled light in the building and allows the building to be cooled to a comfortable temperature. In lieu of a retractable roof, we are thinking about right now a retractable wall on the north end of the building. That's where, you saw in the video, the wall opens up with views to the strip. And the building's basically stacked as tight and close to the football field as possible to create that sense of intimacy and dynamic sort of experience. We have a large lower tier, that's where the lower bowl of the seating tier there, and you can see the seats stack up close and tight to the field from there. And then in the under areas, like is normal for any stadium building, the front-of-house areas for the building, and it's all wrapped inside of a dark glass enclosure, which I'm sure you saw in the video as well. Here's another perspective, cutting out through the long axis. You can see the open end there with views towards the strip. And you can also see on the right-hand side of the stadium, that large truss work there. What we're doing here is we're pulling the field out of the stadium to grow grass outdoors, so it is a natural grass field. This technology's been done in Phoenix, so we're not inventing anything new here, we're just applying it to the stadium. I want to speak for just a second about the design. I think it's important that any inspired design have a story to tell about its inspiration, and that's what these slides here are for. We wanted to create and certainly intend to realize a building that's unlike any other stadium that's been built to date. And it is a building about motion. It's intended and designed to look fast, sleek, modern, and really capture all of that spirit of what the new Raiders will be here in Las Vegas, and I think also capture the city of Las Vegas itself. I've likened it to a black sports car, so you can see some of the design and the lines in the upper left-hand corner there from a Maserati, some lines similar to that in other pieces of architecture. And you can see the early sketches here, thinking about how that design of the seating bowl and how the design of a building could be wrapped with this kind of fluid architecture to create this really unique appearance. But we wanted it to be about Las Vegas as well. It's not just a black sports car that sort of has come to park in the city. It needs to be a part of the city. It needs to sort of include and capture that vibrant and excitement. So I think as you look at the renderings, you'll see some of that as well.
I got to break in. He ought to be honest and say, hey, look, I really developed this for Carson, but then I moved it over here. Jeez.
So again, more early sketches, studying the way the forms would wrap around the seating bowl, the way the roof might begin to be shaped. You can see those sketches beginning to evolve and become tighter until they eventually become the render. Now, I want to make a point about this, similar to what Don said. This is the actual Revit model. So admittedly, sometimes, especially early in the progress, we're having to estimate things and we're beginning to take more artistic liberties, let's say, with the way the project's going to look. This is the actual output of the working computer model that all, you know, the thousands of architects and engineers are currently working on right now. I'll say as well that we're using a cloud-based model, and maybe Lanson might decide to talk about that a little bit more, but the model stays live in the cloud, and all the engineers around the country and the city are working on the same model all the time. So this is absolutely updated every day, and then we output it in the rendering to help show you what it'll look like. This is a nice view of the building with the strip in the background. You can see in the lower right-hand corner where the field will retract. Right now, it's filled with like pre-game events, tents and family events, and then you can see the glass facade as well. We're working with low gloss materials, so the exterior, the facade ribbons are going to be a satin finish to help control the glare and the lens flares. Certainly, we're looking at and studying the reflectivity of the glass as well. But at this moment, you know, what's really great about this building is, in the desert, you really want to have your glass as dark as possible. That helps control the amount of mechanical cooling that you need to bring into the building. But happily for us with this particular client, the Raiders' brand is black. So it's a really perfect sort of marriage of what the building wants to be, both functionally but also the way the brand of the building wanted to be for the team. We are thinking about, you know, a lot of stadiums and I guess casinos as well have marquee signs. We're actually inked a marquee sign on the building on that west facade. Here's a nice shot of the open end. You can see those retractable walls have slid open. They slide on a track. There's really nothing more fancy than that. It's basically like a gigantic sliding door that retracts towards the center. And then you can see the memorial torch. Now, we're not proposing a real flame, sure everyone understands that. It'll be, you know, probably a mist with some lights to help to carry this sort of inspiration of that design element forward in a safe and sustainable way. This is a nice view from the freeway heading towards the strip. You can see the west side marquee and the way the building will be located on the site. This is a great shot of the interior. You can really capture the spirit of that excitement in the seating area with a large open view towards the distinctive Las Vegas skyline. This is the actual view from the seating bowl looking out that window. Sometimes in the computer, we have to take like a wide-angle lens shot, and sometimes we take a normal lens shot. This is what your normal vision or your eye would see if you were sitting in the seating bowl looking out towards the strip. An aerial view again, showing the area where the field is parked. We're on the south side of the building now, looking north. Nice shot of the surrounding areas. We have public plazas, so there's a lot of area for the people to circulate around the building, so it's very safe and comfortable. Multiple entrances, both at the north for people coming from the hotels at the strip and entrances at the south as well. Entrances at the east and west sides for premium and other guests. So it's really a functional and safe and secure building to enter. This is a nice shot of the north entrance. Now, we have our back to the strip. You're looking into the building with that retractable wall, and you can see the grand entrance there on the north end of the building. And I believe this is the last shot, just again, one last aerial perspective showing the retractable field.
Uh-oh.
The stadium and the skyline.
FAA doesn't want that. Keep that in mind.
With that, I'll hand it over to my colleague, Lanson Nichols.
Well, good morning. I'm Lanson Nichols with HNTV, and we are the...
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Okay, so it's afternoon. I've been watching the clock, not quite closely enough.
Not reflecting on the length of the presentation. It's the meeting, not your presentation.
So we've lost the screen here. There we go, let's go back one. All right, so HNTV's been in sports architecture business for a long time. Myself, I've been at it for 30 years, and we have worked on many major collegiate and NFL stadiums around the country, having been involved in Levi's Stadium most recently for the San Francisco 49ers. So I wanted to spend just a few minutes talking about the site development. Let me first explain what HNTV's role is. David has created the vision. We're now working very closely with David, and as the architect of record, it's our job to then bring that vision to reality, to create the construction documents, to advance the details, to work with all the authorities having jurisdiction, the county and state agencies, to secure the final approvals on this and provide the documents to my colleague, John Wood, who will speak in just a minute, to actually build the facility. So the site you're familiar with, we've been talking about it this morning. Along the bottom is Interstate 15, Russell Road on the south side, which is the left-hand side of the screen. And just want to talk about how the site's laid out, and then Brent will talk a little bit about the landscape. On the right-hand side of the screen, you can see two very large lots that are for the one at the top of the screen is for all the shuttles that'll be running back and forth from the casinos and hotel properties. And one of the new features, this is probably the first stadium to really take into account and plan for with the increase of Lyft and Uber, we've actually planned lots on to be a very significant component of the arrivals at the site from those kinds of ride-sharing opportunities. You see right next to that, just to the left of that lower lot, is the main entrance kind of going in the north end. There's three main entrances for the general admission patrons. There's that one on the north end, which is on the right side of the stadium, and then on the left-hand side of the stadium, there are two entrances on either side of where that plaza is for the field rolling in and out. And then directly on the 50-yard line to each side of the stadium are the VIP entrances into the suites and club facilities within the stadium. So we've laid out the site to make it easy to access for all the various different modes of transportation and walking. You can see on the left-hand side, coming in from the corner, just off the center of the screen, straight into the stadium is one of the pedestrian boulevards that we have for the southeast entrance. We've done a similar thing along the western edge of where the field tray or where the grass playing field is parked, similar pedestrian boulevard going into that entrance. So again, trying to keep pedestrian and traffic conflicts to an absolute minimum to the experience. Just a very quick touch on the event level of the stadium. It's important to note that this is the home facility for two teams. It's not just the Raiders. This is also the home facility for UNLV. The locker rooms are located on this level, both the home-team locker rooms, and then we have auxiliary locker rooms to accommodate a variety of events, competitions, things like that. The moving playing field also gives us the opportunity to host a variety of other things on the concrete floor underneath that. And then finally, obviously, all the support facilities that are needed to run the facility, such as kitchens and loading docks and other engineering facilities. So with that, I'll turn it over to Brent with Rios Clemente Hale.
Thank you, Lanson. I'm also joined by Jennifer Markison with Antonazio Landscape Architecture, who's our local partner here to work with us. We're based out of Los Angeles, but we're working with them to make sure that as we develop the site from a landscape perspective, we're really working closely to make this preeminent site, I think, that's really endemic of the region. And that's really, I think, what is kind of our exciting task, is working with the great vision that's been set by David and his team, and then taking that and sort of complementing the building from a landscape side, both from a hardscape and planting side, but then kind of rooting it really within, is the context, I think, of this region, both within Southern Nevada and Las Vegas. And then in kind of as Lanson was talking about, how people may arrive to the site, we get the process of actually trying to make their experience really amazing as they get out of their car or they get out of the shuttle, they get out of, however they arrived on site, and basically walk to the building, and we're filling that in. As part of the way that we're rooting it and really trying to complement the site, we're, you know, evolving really what the plant palette's going to be, but we're really committed to using basically regionally appropriate and adapted plants, including as many native species as possible that will perform well and I think actually really, most importantly, be very sensitive to the climate. And we're really committed to making sure that no matter where you arrive on site, there's a really clear sense of access for pedestrians and people moving through the site to be able to get where they need to, and then hopefully make the site, I think, really up to the capabilities of the building so that it really functions, I think, as a preeminent destination and a preeminent gateway really to the city and the county. Thank you. I'll turn it over to John Wood, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is John Wood. I'm Senior Vice President of Mortenson Construction. As was mentioned earlier, we are the lead construction firm for the project. I am in my 41st year of employment with Mortenson, and for about the last 25 years, our sports construction business. And we currently rank as the largest sports builder in the United States. My role on the project personally will be as the principal in charge of the construction team. That's a role that I have fulfilled on multiple other stadium and arena and ballpark projects around the country, most recently US Bank Stadium in Minneapolis, which is, as you know, the most recently completed, fully enclosed NFL facility, and one that has some similarities to this project. Exactly the same size, under 1.8 million square feet, seating capacity of 65,000, and the first building of its scale in the United States to utilize the ETFE roof, ethylene, tetrafluoroethylene, that David Manica mentioned earlier, will be the roof on this building. We have a 31-month construction schedule for the project. That is commencing in late November of this year. We expect to start moving dirt right around the 1st of December. Earthwork and deep foundation systems will then be underway through the spring and to the midsummer of next year. We'll be starting the concrete structure on the building in the spring, and that will continue through the end of 2018. Will be completed right around the holidays. The concrete structure goes up just to the main concourse level of the building, and above that, it is structural steel. Steel will start in September of 2018 and will be completed in May of 19. The building will be fully enclosed, so the exterior walls of the building, the roof of the building, will be completed by the end of 2018, allowing then the remaining interior finishing work and all of the interior finishing trades to be completed by July of 2018. So 31 months is what we have available. We are totally confident in our ability to complete the building within that period. That is exactly the schedule that we had in Minnesota to build US Bank Stadium, and there we went through two, we went through three hard Minnesota winters. So we'll have two and a half Nevada summers to go through, but we still have great confidence in our ability to complete on time. You know, this is a very fast-track project. There's a substantial overlap between the start of construction and the completion of design. But if there's any city in the United States that is accustomed to fast-track projects, it's Las Vegas. And you've demonstrated that with the great knowledge and support that we have received from your staff. We know that that capability and familiarity with huge fast-track projects exists here, of course, in the subcontracting community and with the quality of labor that exists in the marketplace. So all of that gives us great confidence to believe that come July of 2020, Las Vegas will be proud of its new stadium and its new home for the Las Vegas Raiders. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. And just a reminder to all the presenters, it's Nevada. We're just, it's a friendly reminder. We've got no problem, but it's Nevada.
Nevada. It's Nevada. Remember?
I need to tell you that, Mr.
It's Nevada.
I know you do.
Lucy Stewart. And I'm not going to talk about how long I've been doing this, because then you can calculate how old I am. But of course, this is the entitlement portion, and that's what is before you today. And this request, not unlike any other high-impact project, does include use permits, design reviews, and waivers of development standards. And this is pretty typical. The only difference with this is it's not a hotel casino, and it's not in conjunction with one. Requesting 20 separate use permits, but that's because this property is Zoned H1, and the H1 category, of course, allows for hotels and use that's allowed by right. So with your staff, we've come up with the list of as many items as we think we could use on the property. And what I think is great is this facility, the intent is for it to not just be a recreational facility, but it's going to be a community-wide facility. So, you know, not only the Raiders and UNLV will use it, but there's potential for there to be festivals, concerts, fairs, farmers' markets, offices in their conventions and other community events. Some of the waivers request to recognize some of the potential uses, like a waiver to allow outdoor commercial uses not in a building, encroachment into the airspace, to permit alternative landscaping and screening adjacent to the street frontages, and similar requests. We did work with staff to, on the streets, to provide sidewalks and landscaping and ways to basically funnel the pedestrians into the site so they won't just be walking across the street and can just enter the site. So it will be funneled into it at entrances. And the Raiders have been reviewing, of course, locations for off-site parking that will allow for shuttles and also some of it to be within walking distances. One of the conditions that your staff has recommended is that we've been given a year to allow, to find the off-site parking and to ensure that off-site parking is finalized and obtained. We are confident that we'll be able to meet that, but I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Ken Akkret, who's going to discuss the traffic and the parking.
This is going to get good. This presentation here. Again, Dr. Ken Akkret with Kim Lee Horn. I just want to do a quick overview of some of the key aspects of the traffic and parking. As required for entitlement approval, we have prepared and submitted a traffic study for the project, which is like all other projects and is subject to the concurrence of Clark County and also, in this case, by NDOT. The project includes construction of 2,375 parking spaces on-site. The remaining 13,875 parking spaces will be provided off-site. As noted in the staff report, the off-site parking must be determined within one year of entitlement approvals, and we will be working closely with the Raiders to ensure that requirement is met. At the time of this submittal, we have included a parking justification report. submittal, we have included a parking justification report that provides a menu of possible off-site parking options, which identified thousands of possible parking stalls. We understand that some of these options cannot be counted towards the required parking, and some options are not practical from a neighborhood standpoint. However, we will meet the conditions imposed on the staff report. Upon determination of the off-site parking location or locations, we will update the traffic study accordingly. As noted in our traffic study, there are different modes of travel for getting to the stadium, including the personal vehicles, walking, taxi ride-share, park-and-ride facilities, private casino, shuttles, and limos. We have reviewed the conditions of approval related to traffic, and we are in agreement with the conditions as written. Thank you. Don?
That concludes our presentation. We'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. At this time, then we'll take this. I'll do the public hearing, then I'll take Commissioner questions, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
At this time, I'm going to open the public hearing on item number 36. Anyone wishing to address the board on item number 36, please step forward, identify yourself for the record. Comments will be limited to three minutes.
Nobody.
Do we have anybody on item number 36?
Wow, nobody.
No. Close the public hearing. Turn it over to the board. Now, I can start on one end and go to the other, or do you want to just go randomly? Is anybody... Who's first? Commissioner Jun Kiliani.
Thank you. Thanks again for yesterday, for meeting briefly. Just a couple things for clarifying. We have the decommissioning language in the ordinance, which I think gives protection. We do that on the strip all the time now with the high-impact projects. Did we work, did you work with Metro to make sure that they're familiar with your ing... Just curious, I forgot to ask that.
Yes. Our operations people, led by Tom Blanda, have met frequently, I shouldn't say frequently, repeatedly with representatives of Metro and others to talk about the security aspects of the stadium, not only while it's under construction, but throughout the operation.
Okay, good. Mr. Manica talked about the energy efficiency. I'd never heard about the block in our thing, so that's kind of an interesting component that, because I know the reflection would be it. So I know you're using energy efficiency. Is that throughout your whole property in the design, I'm going to assume?
Well, we're going to be prudent in the design.
Right.
If you're asking whether or not there's a specific lead achievement or something like that...
No, this one, I don't think that that cost would pencil out for you. Tried to anticipate as much energy efficiency as they possibly could put into play.
Sure, because ultimately, we're paying the electric bill. So there's kind of a self-serving reason to be good stewards of energy.
Okay, then, let's see. Did you design for potty parity?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, beyond the code. In addition to that, one thing that's important to the Raiders in the design of this facility is, in addition to typical men's and women's restrooms with parity, that there be family restrooms where someone with a
And baby changing tables.
handicap child or a member of the opposite sex that needs help can have some privacy.
Thank you for that. What is the status of the community benefits component? Is that still with Centic, or does that rise up to you all?
No, no, no. It's with us and working out a specific methodology for employing that with the stadium authority. We've done a lot of work on that. The, just curiously enough, the very first permanent hire executive in Las Vegas for the Raiders is someone in charge of community outreach, and that person's on full-time right now. So that program's evolving. We're still reaching out to members of the community. Met with Commissioner Weekly and talked about this yesterday, so it's, it won't be, it won't be a finished product until well after the stadium's completed.
Okay. And then the law also had a requirement for the 15% threshold for small business, correct?
Yes.
And that's ongoing, or that's part of...
That's ongoing, and it will be throughout the construction. It'll be a challenge to meet that in all respects, but in the aggregate, we're confident that we'll meet that.
Okay. And then the, Mr. Horn, Kim Lee Horn, I think, did you change, what were your six spots again, if I might ask of you for you?
Mr. Akrich.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The Dr. Akrich, sorry.
Yes, thank you. So remind me where you're, potentially you're looking in the industrial parks?
With your, are you, your question's with regard to off-site parking?
Right.
We looked at a whole host of alternatives, kind of a menu list of what the alternatives were. So they're all in the mix, being looked at by the Raiders today.
And I was like that.
Could I just address that just for a moment? One of the reasons, there are two principal reasons why we're not more specific on that. One is it's still under development. And like the development of the building itself, the architecture, the engineering, the plumbing design, and all the rest, we're not prepared to lay out a final plan on the plumbing design, or on the mechanical design, or on the structural engineering, because that's something that's in progress. And the parking plan is also in progress. The second reason why we don't want to be more specific on this is with the universe of parking opportunities that are available, some of them will most assuredly require us to negotiate a purchase, long-term lease, or other, some form of constructive ownership.
I don't want to drive up your costs.
And announcing exactly where those are puts us at a negotiating disadvantage.
Absolutely. And I meant it more in general, because I don't want people gouging you any more than what some of them may actually be doing.
It will involve a range of solutions, though. There's not one single place or one silver bullet that solves the very obvious parking challenge that we all knew about when we acquired the site. The reason we acquired the site was not because parking would be easy. The reason we acquired and chose that site is it's perfect for the location of this stadium and how it incorporates itself into the Las Vegas Strip and the resort community and the vibrance of that area. And it is really more of an urban model than it is a suburban model. You and I've talked about Arrowhead Stadium in Kansas, for instance, which is out in the middle of a cornfield, served by an interstate highway, surrounded by a sea of asphalt. And one would look at that and say, parking should be a snap. And it's true in one respect, there are a lot of parking spaces there, but there's only one way in and out of those parking spaces. So having lots of parking is not synonymous with eliminating congestion. We want to do this smart, within an urban environment, which often involves dispersing the parking. We see you're going to be visiting Atlanta and a few other locations where we can study how they've solved their parking needs in a similar fashion.
Thank you. And then we mentioned yesterday, I mentioned yesterday, that a couple of us had suggested that convention authority, but also you all take a look at your ease of getting people in and out, especially your disabled community, potential people movers, just other ways of being able to move your pedestrians. So I'm glad that you're thinking more futuristically on that part of it. The Ped Bridge, the pedestrian bridge that we saw in the picture, now that would be privately owned, because that came up in that hearing, and I thought it was an excellent suggestion, so that you could contain or protect your folks from the...
Maintain the standards of operation, I think, was the euphemism. Yeah, we're certainly not opposed to that. Look, we recognize that the public infrastructure that is necessitated solely by the stadium will be something that we will be designing and funding. And the operational control of a pedestrian bridge or other public infrastructure that we need to maintain is something that we won't lose sight of.
So you're still working with UNLV. I believe that's still an ongoing conversation. And then, I know you're still working through the PLA component.
Yes.
And then you mentioned longer-term jobs, so I'm hoping that Culinary and some of the folks that represent in that realm have some input into it.
We haven't, we have not met with them yet. We're frankly focused on the design and construction of the stadium, but that will all come in due time. There will be hundreds, literally hundreds, thousands probably, of ongoing jobs, many of them full-time, many of them part-time, all of them important.
Absolutely. I mean, I saw some of the operating engineers here today, and ironworkers and everybody else. They're all waiting for this in some way, shape, or form. So I'm hoping with the, the whole piece right now is still the core of engineers, so hopefully they'll review that part so that you can be shovel-ready when...
You're referring to the need to relocate a 16-foot wide by six and a half foot tall buried drainage culvert, concrete culvert, because it's just too close to the footprint of the building. So the design of that has already been accomplished. Many meetings have already occurred with the Army Corps of Engineers. The reports I'm getting from our civil engineers and others is that they're being very, very cooperative. And we've advanced funding through the county in order to facilitate that.
Yeah, I want people to know, it's not a difficult move, it's just that you have to have their approval.
Yeah, it's a, look, we would prefer not to have to spend the money to relocate a culvert, but that's just the reality.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Thank you. Yes, I have a question for staff. So I want to understand the process on this, on the public process of it. So based on what I'm reading, it says that everything administratively will be signed off on. Is that how I'm, is that how I'm reading the conditions?
I'm not sure what you mean administratively. So, well, let's just talk about the process. That might explain it.
Okay.
So their requirement is they do have to do a decommissioning plan, and they have to bond for that. They also have to do a development agreement and negotiate that. Both of those items have to come to the Board of County Commissioners for approval, and that is through public hearing. In fact, in state of Nevada, we have to ordinance a development agreement. Any contract that we have has to be ordinance. So it's an introduction and public hearing for that. The next step from a zoning standpoint for public hearing, now, any changes, of course, would have to, any substantial changes would have to go back, that sort of thing. So does that answer your question?
It does. And so the reason why I'm asking, because there seems to be a short timeframe to get construction going, and so I'm trying to figure out if both of those things run at the same time, or because based on some of these suggestions or comments from our staff, I'm wondering, will I see that in the development agreement? Will they be able to start the grading process?
So what we generally do while we're working on the development agreement and even the decommissioning plan, we do allow the grading and grubbing and that sort of thing, and that's part of the approval. Now, for them to start, you know, excavating and going vertical, they do need the decommissioning plan, and to get permits to actually build, the development agreement has to be done. So everything's being worked on concurrently, but they're not going to get their first permit to go vertical until the development agreement is done. And they won't get their first permit to, you know, do underground, which is the foundation, that sort of thing, until we have the decommissioning plan.
And I appreciate that. I just want to make sure that the general public understands the process, because what's going to happen, depending on what the conversation is today, somebody will be calling and saying, when do we start work, right? We went through that with other projects on the strip, and people are eager and anticipating. So I want to understand what that process is. So am I to also understand that within some of these bullet points that we put, staff recommendations, that those, we would typically see those in the development agreement, because I don't see a lot from police and fire in here, which concerns me.
So police and fire, we're actually coordinating with, so there's two avenues for that. First is, police and fire have been coordinating with the design team to actually provide for their specific needs in the stadium itself. Then, in the development agreement process, we have reached out to both the fire department and the, and Metro, and actually, fire has responded with what their needs would be for inclusion in the development agreement. So the specific needs of those two entities would be negotiated in the development agreement.
Okay, perfect. And then I just have one question for you also. At the other NFL stadiums, and I will disclose that I'm not a big sports fan, so I've not ever been to a stadium as a whole. Not it's a bad thing, it's just not my gig, so.
That'll change.
So I just want to understand at other stadiums, do you also offer the tailgate experience off-premise as a whole? Is that something that's consistent? Because what I hear the message being out there is, we're doing something that's unique and different from the tailgate experience. And I believe the research that I did showed that other venues across the country also have off-site tailgating experience.
It varies, frankly. Let's just speak about the NFL. There are 31 NFL stadiums because two teams share a stadium. And it probably has a wide variety of, again, from one extreme, I'll use Arrowhead as an example, a very rural location with a sea of asphalt and no structured parking and lots of open tailgating, to maybe on the other end of the spectrum being US Bank Stadium in Minneapolis, the facility that John Wood recently finished there. John Wood, do they have 300 parking spaces on site? Yeah, about 300. So they have virtually no parking. They don't have enough to park their staff on site, let alone have tailgating. And the parking is in a variety of locations dispersed throughout the city. We'll be somewhere in between. The tailgating activity is kind of fundamental, especially in the eyes of the owner of the Raiders, to a Raider experience. So that's one of the reasons, only one of the reasons, why structured parking doesn't work for us at the stadium site, because it's just impractical to think of people barbecuing on the second or third level of a concrete parking structure where there are sprinkler heads ready to go off at any moment. But with the 2,500 spots on site, we'll certainly take the tailgating experience and try to elevate that to something more than just an ad hoc, out of the back of a, you know, pickup truck experience. We think there's an opportunity there to actually enhance it. On the remote lots, it will depend on where they are, what type of lot, and what the restrictions are there. But it's something that we think is part of the day of game experience. Let me just say this about parking in general, because I know that's issue number one, two, and three on this stadium. And as I expressed earlier, it's not a surprise to us that a 62-acre, 62-acre acre site, once you carve out 15 to 17 acres for the footprint of the building, can't park 16,000 automobiles. That was never a surprise to us, and frankly, wasn't a deterrent. It will be solved. It won't be solved because you regulate it being so. That may be true. You have regulations that require us currently to have 16,000 spots, and we'll meet the requirements. But it'll be solved because it's so important to the Raiders' business, when you think about it. It's one thing to say, well, there has to be a certain quantity of parking. What matters to us, though, is the day of game experience for our fan base, and not just for our fan base, for people coming to concerts and other events there. And we realize it doesn't begin when you walk through the turnstile in the building, and it doesn't end after you've walked outside of the building. It begins from the moment you decide to make a purchase ticket online, and you start thinking about, how am I going to get there? And if I drive an automobile, where am I going to park it? And is it going to be safe when I walk out and find my automobile? And all of those kind of decisions. That is really fundamental to our business. So that's why parking will be solved. That's why it's, it's important to the county, I realize that. It's important to your staff, it's important to the stadium authority. But with all due respect, as important as it is to you all, it's way more important to us. This is our fan base, this is our revenue stream, this is our responsibility.
Thank you for that. And I think that, at least for me, so the average person, this is a new type of venue that we're bringing to our area, right? So it's nothing that we haven't seen. I just want to be able to go back and explain and tell the story on that parking. So I appreciate you giving us the layman's terms of it, and, you know, we have to look at 46 events that are there a year. And so I got to believe that if you don't have the parking situation resolved, you'll have an empty stadium that you'll still be paying for. So
Exactly right.
It's a business model for you, right?
That's exactly right.
So I just want to be able to, because I think that sometimes we do a disservice on not getting enough on the record for the everyday person that wants to pull the minutes and understand. So I appreciate you answering that.
Thank you. Commissioner Weekly.
Thank you so much. I'd just like to ask, in reference to the design phase, earlier we had an item on the agenda, I believe it was in Commissioner Sisalax's district, where there's this multi-use type facility as well as outdoor activities. And I asked a question in reference to lighting. What would the outside lighting be like? And I ask that because I know that you all have navigated your way thus far through FAA approval. But as it relates to outside lighting on that beautiful architectural design that I've seen thus far, what's the lighting going to be like because of the proximity to the landing strips and the airport and towers?
Well, first of all, there won't be interference with landing or aircraft taking off. The FAA The FAA has found that. And I'd be slightly disingenuous if, if I could describe it specifically because it hasn't been fully designed and we're going through that process right now. It'll, it'll be a combination of several things, though. It'll be safety and security lighting in the parking area.
The Airline Pilots Association says he's wrong.
It'll be architectural lighting to enhance the character of, of the building. And it will be lighting within the building that will be largely contained within the building, although one of the reasons why David has chosen to express the design, to give people, especially at night, a view into the building, the vibrance of things that are happening inside, so that it's not just a hockey puck with a solid exterior skin, so that you can actually see in and get a taste for what's going on in there. And so some of that lighting will no doubt come out. I doubt very seriously whether the exterior lighting on this building will be competitive with the nearby, just to our east.
Sure. And then another question that I have for you, Mr. Brown. Are you working with or have you had conversations with the Nevada Resorts Association as it relates to your travel parking choices that I see you have listed here on the slide? You know, as we talk about the private shuttles, the park and ride lots, have we had those type of conversations yet?
We haven't, we haven't had extensive conversations with the NRA, the Nevada Resorts Association, although we've had some discussions, especially with some of their members, who are most closely our neighbors, and how this might impact or be beneficial to their parking structures. MGM in particular, they're, they're very concerned about how this all plays out and where people are going to park. On the one hand, it could be a benefit to them, an enormous benefit. After all, our studies show that nearly 50% of the people coming to a typical Raiders' game are going to be coming from out of town. Those are potential hotel occupants, which forms part of the rationale for why the hotel tax is in play here. And of some of those, they'll be, you know, they may be driving automobile, most will be flying. Other people coming from Southern California, where the Raiders' base, much to the two teams that are in the process or have just recently relocated there, where we have a dominance, if I should say that, in that marketplace, certainly many of those people will be coming over by automobile. And where they park is part of the equation that has to be solved. Some of that may involve some of the resort properties. We're not really in a position to control that. We're in a position possibly to influence it and to work with the resort property partners or stakeholders on this.
I appreciate that. And Mr. Chairman, just have one, two more points. The game they experience that was referenced by the everyday average normal person like Commissioner Kirkpatrick here, who's not a sports enthusiast, if you will. You know, my thought is, when you gave us a little brief explanation in terms of the game they experienced, but I'm thinking that it has to be, folks, over the top. This is Vegas, number one. And when you look at the, the truck, the, the engine that Tommy White is driving in on, or just the, the entire experience, I mean, hopefully there's a lot of thought, Mr. Brown, this is Vegas now. Has to be over the top. Where are we with that and who's, who's making all of those deciding factors?
You're right. Well, without going through the line item budget, which I have no intention to go through for a variety of reasons, let me just tell you, out of a 400-line budget that we've produced on there, there is one line entitled "The Vegas Factor"
Okay.
With, with a number in there. We know it has to be a first-class stadium, that's not understated. We know it has to have a Vegas factor. Not even sure exactly how that gets expressed yet, but I can tell you, there's an amount just to enhance it because it's Vegas.
Well, I appreciate the visit from yourself and Mr. Brown. Thank you both for coming in and bringing me up to speed and, and just answering a number of the questions that I have. As it relates to the community outreach and employment opportunities and business opportunities, that's so important to a number of us. And I know that you all have had a number of meetings and, you know, I look forward to also sitting down with you all again, with folks in the community, to make sure that we continue to keep this transparent, make sure that as we move, something that I believe is going to be life-changing, that people here in Southern Nevada really get an opportunity to be a part of this experience and that this is not just all about bringing in a bunch of out-of-state folks, not that I have any problems with that, but I just think that it's so important, especially for the seven of us sitting here, that we do our very best to make sure that Southern Nevadans have their fingers, their hands, and their footprint on what I believe is going to be something that generations to come will enjoy and be blessed to be a part of. So thank you both very much.
There's something special about a sports facility. And I alluded to it earlier, about how it draws people together in a common, shared experience. There's also, frankly, from my experience, something special about the construction of a sports facility. And I've noticed this over the years in being involved with the development of stadiums and arenas and facilities like that. There becomes, without even having to state it, a sense of mission. You know, it's one thing to build a hospital, those are important, for sure. It's another thing to build a shopping mall, those, those are needed as well. But it's one thing to build something that the worker is going to say, I'm going to bring my grandson or my granddaughter here someday and show them what Pop did, what, what he was involved with. And, you know, without even saying that to the workforce, that, that gets taken up. And it's surprising, in the little ways, but very important ways, how that comes across in the daily activities of the workforce on a facility like this. It becomes a mission.
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Gibson.
With respect to the parking issue, the, I, I really feel comfortable with the approval subject to the one-year allowance that gives you the opportunity to do it. And primarily, that's because you're going to be less than halfway through the construction, but you will have a whole lot in the ground by the time that year is over. So you're so keenly motivated that it really kind of strips away whatever motivation we have to resolve the issue. It overwhelms it. And I feel comfortable with that. I think that's a really important piece. The exciting thing for me is that the stadium, kind of consistent with what you just said a moment ago, redefines, maybe even almost rebrands, the city of Las Vegas. It, it does so much, I say the city of Las Vegas, the Las Vegas Valley and the, the entire experience that we have here. And no one could say this isn't the most exciting thing that has happened in a good long while, but maybe the most redefining thing that has happened in 20 years or 30 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, on the parking, I agree, I, I have very little concern. I think the study is, is very cautious. And I, I think it's very conservative. You mentioned Arrowhead, I'll mention Gillette, with Route One and one way in, one way out, and a sea of parking. And I don't think that's what we want. We're not going to get that. But I'm not sure we want to bring 65,000 people. And the, the choices, I think, not only are they fluid, but again, I think the numbers are very conservative. And if T-Mobile has taught us something, as well as the NASCAR races, it's maybe the first event or two, there may be some confusion.
No, let's just change the verb. It won't be "may," it will "shall." There shall be some confusion, for sure.
But sporting events find a way, and especially the fans that come to these events, be it a football game, a concert, a hockey game, they will find the way, whether they're a tourist or a local, where it's convenient for them and the best option for them. And that ties directly into the experience. I, you know, as much as the tailgating experience onsite is wonderful, I have no worries about fan experiences around a Raiders' game in Las Vegas. They may not all be pregame onsite, but you can bet that the Raider community is going to create a lot of experience out there. That's another thing, I, it's just one of those additional benefits, because it's not just the Raiders in the site and those close proximity, there's going to be venues all over this valley that experience the Raiders' game, pregame. That's wonderful. The one concern, and it's not a concern, it's an issue, that it's been talked about for months now, not only affiliated with the, associated with the Raiders' project, but the convention authority expansion, World Resorts, the Fountain Blue, everything else that's happening in this town. And I, I don't question the commitment that everyone has made to local labor. And local labor's been very aggressive as far as apprentice programs, training, everything. But we're going to reach, that, that 15% or whatever the number is, that labor force locally is going to be tapped, from, from the minority contractors to the larger businesses. And that's something that we should go in as wide open, because I don't want blame and fingers being pointed two years from now, that we don't have enough local labor. As long as those initial license plates on the construction site say Nevada, that's good. And I think first in time is, is going to get the cream of the crop. But we will reach a point from a, just from a labor standpoint, it's going to be a huge challenge to, to Tommy and many of the trades and throughout the, the entire labor force. So I, I've always felt, and listened in the conversation for the last three to six months, that we've got to make sure that we're going this with our eyes wide open, making sure that we have as ready of a workforce as possible, probably in our history. Because the opportunity over the next three to five years from, just from a local labor standpoint, is just through the roof.
No, we've looked at that, we understand the challenge. And you've put your finger on part of the scheduling aspect of this. If we can be the first mover, that's certainly a benefit to us. I'll just say this, if, if Tommy and his colleagues are as persistent in developing a labor force as they have been in getting the legislation and getting this stadium put together and getting this project off the ground, we won't have a problem.
Commissioner Brager, and then I'll go to Commissioner Giacchini.
Most of the questions are most. I think all the questions are especially with the parking is, as we, I believe that's more important to you than it is to us, quite frankly.
That's not to say it's not important to you. I don't mean to leave you with that impression.
No, no, it isn't. And I don't, I don't mean that either, but I believe that you need to make sure you can get everyone there in a timely manner before the game starts and all the experiences they want. So I'm comfortable that that will take place. But what I wanted to say, since so much was asked and stated, I just want to say thank you for meeting individually with, I, I believe all this, I'll use myself, to be able to see what you're doing, have questions answered, because we're out in the community and people stop us and ask us questions. And coming from a sports family, if we have a Sunday birthday, we have to figure out who's playing where and what. And if we don't have three TVs, then it has to be somewhere else. So in that experience, I appreciate what you're doing, how you're doing, that you take what we say very seriously and that this is a big step for our community. I've been here most of my life and it's just, I think it is a game changer. And I'm excited between that and the NHL and, you know, hopefully the baseball team getting somewhere where they can have another venue and the people will come. So thank you for that and your commitment to us.
You're quite welcome. Thank you.
Commissioner Giacchini.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up on Commissioner Brown's comment. Another verbiage that's been out there is that this is so high-tech. I mean, it's going to be phenomenal, but our construction workers are quite talented and they don't need, I guess there was some criticism that I heard out in the, in the real world, not from you all, that, oh, we have to find these specialized. And we have, our, our talent is here. They know, they do the high rises on the strip as it is now. So from electrical to anything else, they know how to do the business. But something that triggered in my mind, as we look at Nevada higher, we're looking at Nevada higher, because there are construction workers across the state that could also be tapped. And so I think that, I'm hoping that that's part of what you all deal with in your PLA discussion, so that we're, before travelers come in, that you are employing as many Nevadans as you possibly can.
Yeah, the reality will be, whether we put that in an agreement or not, that'll be, that's the, that's the real world.
Sure. And we're triggering other construction now. I mean, I'm thrilled with Fountain Blue finally selling in my district and that'll, that'll trigger it. We have Resorts World that's going underground and they, I required a PLA on them. So there's a lot of other construction work going on, but I just would hope we would look statewide before we went out of state to, to look for the talent.
I just go back to your point about it being a high-tech stadium and therefore requiring a specialized labor force. Well, there's surely some of that that is true. But earlier I mentioned that there are advantages and to, to doing business here, to developing the stadium here, as opposed to some other market. There are three principal advantages. One is a very knowledgeable and experienced governmental apparatus, from your staff to you folks, having had the experience of approving very, very high-profile, exquisite, high-level finish projects that need to be accomplished in a short period of time. So the, the kind of regulatory and governmental support system that's here is very important. And that's one of the principal features that allows us to look at this otherwise oppressive schedule with confidence. The second is the weather. It's not Minneapolis, you know, and John spoke to that. But really, thirdly, it's the experience of the local contracting and labor pool here that is very, very important. I, I spoke about this being a mission among the labor force, among the contractors. We have very little dissension. The typical job site disputes just fall away for some reason, and I think it's because of that sense of mission. But one of the reasons we are confident in the schedule, which is no mean feat, is because of that experienced labor force that's here. They've had experience building these resort and hotel and other projects here. So it's hard to imagine a high-tech component that would require such exotic experiences that we couldn't find.
That's why I decided, was pretty surprised with that.
Yeah, that didn't come from us, surely.
Wasn't anything from your folks, but I was like, that's not accurate.
No, I don't know who suggested that.
Right.
It's true, it will be a high-tech stadium and one of the things that we're competing against are not other sports or entertainment venues, but it's the internet and it's, you know, high-definition TV and everything else. The experience at this facility has to be not just that good, it has to be better.
And, and we learned during our boom, just before we fell, when we had so many men and women that died on the jobs, that we put in the OSHA 10 and there's other requirements there for public safety for them as well. So, yeah, that gives me comfort, because that should always be at the top of the list as far as that's concerned.
One thing, one thing that was explained when we had our very first subcontracting and contractor outreach session, where something like 1,300 people showed up, interested in getting on our database, on John Wood's database, so that they can be, you know, have a shot at having some work here. He explained the schedule to them. He explained that it's a 31 construction, 31-month construction time. He explained that that schedule does not compromise safety, that built into that schedule is overarching presumption that this is going to be a safe job, that we're not taking any shortcuts for the sake of schedule that will compromise safety at all.
Thank you. That means, that's huge. And then as you deal with the community benefits, because many of these men and women will probably hopefully move here, their children are going to have an impact on our schools. So I would hope that that's part of the conversation to help with that. Our school district is pretty strapped right now financing. And so I hope that that's part of that conversation.
Part of the conversations already occurred in some of the school events that the Raiders have really been heavily participating in.
I know, I'm, I'm.
Oh, come on. It's not going to help with financing.
Yeah, we, we can talk.
Okay, I'm getting a look from the law, the lawyers here. I can't go into the, you know.
Is Rob giving me a look?
He's giving me a look.
And then just a final, because I would assume, I mean, the parking is an issue, but it's one that can be overcome. And I would liken it to what we did with Rock and Reel. It's now, granted, it's not the same volume, but we anticipate, we didn't want people driving all into that one corridor to create that congestion. So I think if people think about that, that's kind of what you're attempting to do at this point in time. So that just kind of gives you on a smaller scale. I would hope, though, that as you do your survey, you know your, your clientele, you know your members, that you would be able to analyze at some point, how many will be flying, how many will be driving, and how many, that type of thing, so that you can incorporate that into that study. And so you're saying yes, so that gives me some comfort that you do.
Yeah, I can tell you right now, the most recent statistic, and I'm a little bit behind because my end of the business is not the marketing. And by the way, Commissioner Kirkpatrick, as far as being knowledgeable about football, don't feel alone. Al Davis once told the L.A. Times that I didn't know whether the ball was stuffed or inflated. So, but, but about, in excess of 40% of the people who have currently signed up for a season, to be on the season ticket base, are from out of the market, out of the region.
Okay. And that helps, because I think that gives us some anticipation. It helps the airport. There are other places that we could look at as far as that's concerned. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just going to wrap up with a couple of comments before I make a motion here. And I want to thank you all for being here, the entire team that you assembled. I've got a couple of questions that I want to direct at staff before I I've got a couple of questions that I want to direct at staff before I get in some commentary. The video wall that is presented in the slideshow, Rosemary, the Department of Aviation has already spoken with you regarding what can be, you know, directed towards the runways and whatnot. So there will be no moving displays, so to speak. Your game will not be broadcast on the screen?
No, we won't be broadcasting the game. Even if we wanted to, the NFL wouldn't permit that.
But that has to clear DOA.
Yeah, we know it's got to clear a number of hurdles.
Along the way.
As to how it gets positioned and up.
Good, okay. Then Mr. Accretz, and I know we spent a lot of time on this traffic and this parking issue that has been talked about here. And the code requires four per, one per four seats. You can seek a waiver. Now, Mr. Accretz said you're not going to seek a waiver to that and you could potentially seek a waiver to reduce that 16,250 down. So he's guaranteed that you're going to find him. I don't need that guarantee because you potentially could get a waiver down from the 16,250. So you're aware of that.
Thank you for the clarification.
So the, and then you have had extensive discussions with MGM and Caesars in particular, who sit on the stadium authority as it relates to issues that relate to the NRA and to the parking and their properties, obviously to the east of the strip, to the facility and whatnot. And I extend my congratulations to them for working so closely with you. This is a community facility that's going to be used and it's going to help not just, we're focusing on Raiders, but this isn't just Raiders, as you pointed out so eloquently, this is also the Rebels and a plethora of other events that are going to be coming to the stadium. And I'm going to take a shot at a couple of thank yous along the way here. And I know that, as you said, Mr. Brown, I'm sure I'm going to leave a couple out, but I want to mention a couple. The first being Nancy and her team have been absolutely incredible. I mean, the number of meetings that Nancy and I've had about this, that you've had with her about this, that Ken and everybody's had with her, Jody, it's just been amazing. And her staff deserves an incredible amount of support, not just Nancy, her whole staff for making this happen and for getting us to the point we're at today.
We heartily agree.
Thank you. And as it relates to lobbying for this project, a couple of gentlemen here, I'm going to name them and I know I'm going to miss some. Tommy White, Frank Hawk, and my planning commissioner, Mr. Moore, laying in the back of the room. We wouldn't be here today without the efforts that they put forward in Carson City to help make that happen. So we appreciate you lobbying, not just for the job, for the project, but for the jobs that are created by this. Mr. Aguero, Jeremy Aguero and Steve Hill, we spoke to them on the phone yesterday. They have been available constantly to help work through this, you know, in concert with the stadium authority mission as we work through different agreements and whatnot. And they've got their charge and we've got ours and I appreciate all their help. Rosemary Vassiliades and her team at McCarran have been great in shepherding us through the FAA process, finally getting the approval on the 7460 so we can move forward and getting us to the point we're at today.
You bet.
And finally, Mr. Bedain and Mr. Davis have been incredible partners to work with. I've, in nine years here, I've worked on an awful lot of projects I have never had applicants that have been so available and so cooperative in terms of getting a project moving. So a special shout out to those two gentlemen. I thank you for the local jobs in construction. These are jobs with good wages, good benefits, which is extremely important to this entire community, to all seven of us sitting up here to putting these men. I hope we run out of labor in Southern Nevada and we have to expect to the state and other bordering states. But I've been assured that they've got a lot of people still on the waiting list that we want to put to work and we will get them put to work. That's not to mention the thousands of permanent jobs that will result after the stadium is up and is running. When it comes to the parking, you're going to come back at some point and address the parking issue. We fully understand that. I fully understand that. You understand that. There are a lot of potential solutions out there. And as I said to everybody that's asked me this, they're either expensive, more expensive or most expensive. It's just a question of where you're going to land as you're at late parking. But you have risked not just the money on this, you're risking your reputation and the entire franchise of the Oakland Raiders that are going to soon to be Las Vegas Raiders, that this is going to work and you're going to come up with a plan that we're going to be, move forward on that. And you do understand that as we move forward, you're assuming the liability that you're going to find those parking spaces and that you're risking the money moving forward into this as we sell the bonds and we move forward with you as well. So we're all at risk here.
We understand the risk. Believe me.
Okay. So that being said, I just want to say that this started a couple of years ago with a dream about the Raiders moving here and then it moved to the SNTIC committee that, you know, voted to recommend the Point 88 and the Point 5 for the convention center to the legislature. The legislature met, the governor, it was a tough battle at the legislature and got a lot of help to get it passed. The governor signed that bill and formed the stadium authority, who has been working with you on some 14 different agreements as you get through this entire process. You recently got FAA approval with your 7460, which is the next step along the long road that you, the journey that we've begun and we're taking together, which brings us today, to today and the motion that I'm going to make, since this is proudly in District A, that I'm going to recommend approval per staff conditions. Do we have any comments regarding the motion? Seeing none, please cast your votes.
That's obviously unanimous.
Motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add one thing, one other name, you didn't forget, but one other name. I think we all feel pretty fortunate in Clark County. I already have the job, so I don't have to say it to him. But you've all met with him, you know, personally, you've heard him today. We are, we are all very, very fortunate that he's been chosen by the Raiders to head up his project.
No, Mr. Webb, you're absolutely right. I knew I'd forget somebody and you're the one I forgot. So thank you very much. Thank you to the entire team that's here. Congratulations. You got a unanimous vote moving forward. Next item.
So there you go. It's, let's see here. Put that right there and.
Thank you all.
That was.
And how about before everybody leaves, give the staff, Nancy and her staff, one round of applause for all that they've done on this.
And I'm going to say one thing.
Thank you. Next item.
Item 39, UC 69417, use permit for a temporary outdoor commercial event, the San Gennaro Feast on 20.4 acres in a C2 general commercial zone within the CMA Design and Matu Overlay Districts. Generally located on the south side of Sunset Room.
That should go there. And I'll get to your comments in a second here. Let's see, there's video manager. I have a lot to say. First of all, yeah, parking is going to be a chore. The Raiders are clearly overstretched themselves financially. That is a certainty. That's absolutely sticking out there. The other bit of information I picked up from this is that, well, first of all, I have to say this. I have never seen Oakland, well, let me take that back. I have never seen Oakland. Let me take that back. There was, there was. Well, let me take. Let me take that back. One time, have I ever seen Oakland move as quickly on a public project as Clark County has on this stadium project? And that was after, actually two ways. First of all, I've seen it twice. When we brought back the Raiders from Los Angeles to Oakland and then that was, and that happened, and that happened after we rebuilt City Hall after the earthquake. Those are the two times I've seen Oakland move as fast as I saw, I've seen Clark County move with this project. And that's a compliment to the staff of Clark County, Nevada. And I just really have to say this and I would be intellectually dishonest if I didn't point this out, that what Joe Lacob said to me about Oakland being leadership challenged was in the, in the context of San Francisco being more aggressive in retaining the Warriors. This is while Jean Kwan was mayor. You can make the same argument with a giant asterisk with Oakland because in Oakland's case, we were more aggressive about retaining the Raiders, thanks to Larry Reed over time. The Raiders never approached us about having a new stadium in Oakland. But when Libby came in, it was more a reaction to, rather than, and a political response to, rather than strictly building a stadium because we need a new facility, okay? Now, through all that, the Raiders were completely dishonest to us. That's a given and it's unquestionably sueable. That is right front and center of the truth. But, but, but the overlay to that is we didn't push hard enough because we didn't have an elected official or officials in place that basically let their staff be aggressive or demanded aggressiveness by their staff. That is, that's the case. However, let me, now I haven't even said that, let me say this. If the Raiders focused on staying here, all right? And if the NFL had the land, okay? And the owners made the decision to be here, I guarantee you, the staff here would have worked as hard, if not better and harder. Not only that, the staff here, because we already have the infrastructure, has less to do. Vegas and Clark County has a gigantic catch-up project. They're essentially remaking a giant part of their city. And the expense that comes with that is enormous. And not only that, they're going to foist a lot of that on the Raiders. That much is clear. The Raiders don't have to deal with that in the Oakland context and that's why I believe this deal is wreckable, very wreckable. The one thing that no one talked about was price tag. And remember, we're at the preliminary stages, but just how expensive this is will become more evident as we go along. And not only that, this is a complicated project with many pitfalls. For example, the Airline Pilots Association objects to the glare that the stadium will throw off, glare that we saw in videos. That glare, we picked up by an airplane. Now, having said that, it is right next to Mandalay Bay, okay? What the FAA didn't do is build an actual computer model where you could actually fly an airplane, you know, through and here and there. And you see the stadium over there, how that looks and everything else. They didn't do that. Because when they did that, I guarantee you, we would have seen the video, okay? So I can't take the FAA's determination seriously and I'm very concerned personally for the safety of the people who are going in and out of the airport. And that includes myself when I go to Las Vegas, if it gets that far. So this is a preliminary stage. They've gotten this far and I didn't expect that they would not. However, I'm more convinced than ever that this project is fraught with a number of fiscal casualties in the way. All right. So, but I also, you know, despite the fact that, yeah, this is not a done deal, I have to say this, that Oakland, and I say this because in the context of something I said before, that Oakland, that I spend a lot of time in Atlanta and I'm contemplating a move for my mother. And Atlanta has the will and the initiative to complete big projects. And I've said before and I've said again and again and again throughout this stage, many stages of this issue of building a new stadium for the Raiders in Oakland, is that Oakland has to prove that it has the will and the initiative to complete big projects. And there's something here where this, this city, and I'm, I realize the gravity of what I'm saying, is essentially lazy. And this has been the case for some time. This is, I'm not talking about just now. It's been the case going back to the early, to the late 90s, where it doesn't really strive to push and improve. And that's, and that shows up in something that, you know, Raiders representative Morris Bradshaw said to me, he says, you come back in and everything looks the same. It does. It really does. Now, someone might say, well, there's new housing going up. When I say it looks the same, I'm talking about public projects. And even in the housing case, we don't have cheap housing. You know, we have, in 2011, we had a $111 million affordable housing budget. Now it's at 50 million and we brag that that's a lot of money. It's not, folks. We have an elected office holder group that doesn't understand how to pull the levers of government to make government work for you. It understands how to tweet that it's for the Dreamers, which is great. It understands how to produce revolutions that it's in support of something going on not here in the city, right? But we didn't elect a councilperson or mayor to be a senator or congressperson. We elected councilpeople and mayors to be just that and they fix cities. Somewhere along the way, Oakland's elected officials have forgotten that. All right, now, so, I'll take your comments here. Okay, where are we? Uh, no, it's not a done deal. And John Mark says, you're sick to your stomach. Oh, Steve says, thanks for your gribious. Hey, welcome, Mr. Gribious. And Steve says, Zenny mentioned Scott McKibben is heading up Oakland's leadership. Is still that, is that still possible? Um, no, I, I said Scott McKibben, oh, I said that early on, I thought that he should have the task force. And he is still the head of the JPA right now, but he's headed toward, headed across the bay to work on, or rather for, the new stadium authority for Levi Stadium. So it's another case of a talented person out the door. It means that there's a job opening. Now, as to who fills that job, I don't know. I applied for the job at the behest of Robert Bob in 2002. And, you know, would I love to have the job again? Could I do it very well? Yes, I could. Do they want me? I seriously doubt that. And particularly after what I've said, but I stand by that. You know, I, I believe the Coliseum needs champions. And the trouble is that we haven't had champions. We've had, you haven't had champions representing the Coliseum. Okay, Scott did a great job of being a temporary champion, but Scott has to work out for his own well-being and future. And he has to make sure at the end of the day, he has a job that's, provides a pension for himself, which allows him to retire comfortably. And that's what he's trying to engineer there. So I get that. I completely get that. So, yeah, I completely get that. So that's, that's what's happening with, with this, with this meeting. And by the way, if you haven't done so and you are new to Zenny 62, I strongly encourage you to invest. And the best, fastest way that you can invest, and when I say invest, I don't mean donate, I mean invest. You get shares back, okay? You get shares back is to invest in Zenny 62 here. And if you invest in Zenny 62 here, you'll get, for example, we have now 47 investors and together they own almost 3% of Zenny 62 Media. That's right. That's right. Almost 3% of Zenny 62 Media is spread over 47 investors. It's not bad. They don't all own Zenny 62 Media in equal amounts either. But it's commensurate with the amount of money that they spent in investing. You get your shares back to represent on a spreadsheet. They're there, they're in writing, they've got your name on them. This is not a joke. This is not a trick. If Zenny 62 Media is acquired, you get your percentage. If I'm able to find a way that we can sell shares in the open market, that's where you'll be able to trade yours. Zenny 62 Media is a Georgia company. I established it, it's listed, however, it's, or it's, I did not purposely, I did not keep the registration for the Articles of Incorporation going because then I would have to pay annual tax on a company that wasn't generating revenue. And so I didn't, I didn't want to do that at all because basically me, Zenny Abraham, Zenny Abraham and Associates was the company, was the person that has been the revenue generator and the bill payer, right? And so I wanted to maintain that until I was able to build up a, an investment chunk where I could say, okay, now I've got, you know, $5,000, I can spend that money to refile the Articles of Incorporation and move forward. But I wanted to do all of that after I got the investors. If you ever started a company and then you know about angel investors, angel investors are people who come along, like for example, Marc Anthony. like, for example, Marc Anthony Jones invested $25,000 in my first company, Sports Business Simulations. He owned 22% of it, actually owns 22% of it, okay? And that's... It's like that. So, I thought, "Wait a minute. If someone can own, or you can make a deal for someone to own a percentage of your company, if they put in $25,000, what about if they put in $2? That's the idea. It's no different." So, you're micro angel investors. I want to emphasize and hammer that home, micro angel investors. If anybody tells you, "Oh, that's ridiculous. It doesn't work," they don't know what the frick they're talking about. That's common. All right. So, now, no, I don't think Vegas is... I don't think Vegas... The Vegas story has been written yet at all. So, at all, at all. So, I think the rich in terms of the Vegas plans may very well come in May of next year. I really do. So, okay, folks, this is... It's 1:14 now. I'm going to break and catch up with the rest of the news, and so, I... Let me see if we've got any more comments. Corey Brown says, "Vegas may not be a done deal, but Bay Area government seemed to once again be letting opportunities slip by. They don't have the stuff to capitalize on this Vegas mess." You know, Corey, there's a part of me that believes there's a behind closed-door meeting going on with this, and the only reason I say that is because of the obvious. This project is very expensive for the Raiders. They may not be able to pull it off, which means that a move would be in the... Would not be in the best interest of the Raiders financially. Then, of course, there's this other subject of where they're going to play in 2019, because at 2019, they don't have a home, okay? Sam Boyd Stadium? Well, if that's the case, they could have played there, what, this year, next year? They're going to be here this year. They're going to be here in Oakland next year. 2019 is out there. I've got to believe that somebody is having a conversation about that extra year in addition to some sort of provision in case this, quote, "Vegas" thing doesn't work out, okay? You have to remember, Oakland has a stadium plan. Fortress has that. Still has the ENA. That's still out there. It hasn't gone away yet. So, keep that in mind. All right, folks, I am going to be back later, and I'm going to put out some videos on demand and make some phone calls. I've got some little research to do. Thank you all. I'll see you. And don't forget to invest in Zenny 62 Media. Again, once again, I say invest. Thank you all. See you.